It is 6:30, March 25th. We'll call to order the regular meeting of Tracy City Council. We'll stamp the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invitation?
Let's pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Tracy, Minnesota, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose each may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. He's receded. Okay, so does everybody have a chance to look over the minutes?
Move approval is ready.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone know of any conflicts of interest tonight?
Can you...
Oh, did I miss it?
I have a couple additions to the agenda if you could before I approve it.
Okay, yeah.
Ten, J, K, L, and M. J is in reference to engineering, K an L for the airport, and M will actually be Jeff discussing some broad acres.
I'll approve the agenda with additions.
First and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, does anybody know of any conflicts of interest? Hearing none, we move on to public comment. Anybody have any comments on anything that is not on the agenda tonight? At this time, we have a presentation that is down with the ten, A. I think we're gonna move that up because they have some trading to attend, so we'll bounce that up to right now. Okay, so tonight, it's my honor and pleasure to present some awards to some folks here in Tracy for heroic behavior. And we're talking about folks from the Tracy Ambulance Service. And Tracy Ambulance Service has... has active radios. They're a nonprofit organization that provides emergency medical services to Tracy and the surrounding cities and townships. The primary role of the ambulance service is to provide onsite emergency care as well as transportation to the nearest medical facility as safe and expeditiously as possible. The ambulance staff is trained to perform their duties calmly under pressure and often in life and death situations. Recently, a Tracy Ambulance Service crew encountered such a situation and flawlessly demonstrated their skill and professionalism. On February 18th, 2019, at 5:15 PM, Tracy Ambulance was dispatched for an advanced life support ALS intercept with Walnut Grove Ambulance. Tracy Ambulance responded with a paramedic and crew of three EMTs. Tracy's EMTs met with Walnut Grove's EMTs as they were performing CPR on a seven-year-old child that had stopped breathing. CPR continued with the help of Tracy Crew while en route to Sanford Medical Center here in Tracy. Upon arrival, the child was revived thanks to the efforts and skills of the Tracy Ambulance Service Crew, Walnut Grove Ambulance Crew, and the ER staff at Sanford Medical Center. The crew included Aaron Johnson, Dale Johnson III, Renee Emmon, and Buddy Baumann. It is my pleasure this evening to present the words to these people for their efforts and their skills. I'd also like to say that we should also remember at this time, all of the men and women who are in service to the public, who are there for the call when we need them. And this is the kind of things that make our community a home, and Tracy sincerely appreciates what you do. So I will read off the names if you want to come forward. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Y'all don't run off yet because we want to get a picture of all four of you up here in front of us. Dale Johnson. Renee Emmon?
Emmon.
Emmon?
Close enough.
Well, I was concerned I might mispronounce.
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much. If y'all would like to step over here for me.
That's why I'm in the back.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
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 Todd Hagan.
Good evening.
Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates. Some I recognize, some of you are newer since I've been here. Ellers and Associates is your municipal advisor. We advise a city in bonds like tonight, in bonding for projects, in economic development, matters too, like tax increment or tax abatement. And I see some handiwork over here, maybe next door, some of that with the building being gone. So what we do is, we're sort of like the engineer architects of the bond world. We don't buy the bonds. We package them up like an engineer would or an architect, and we send them out for bids. Sometimes we work with one bank or one broker dealer. Sometimes, if we feel that we're better suited to send this out to the public competitively, we will. That way, that the council is assured to get the best possible interest rate on the bond at the day of sale. So we've got two bonds here that we're gonna competitively bid for you. And if they're large enough, they're general obligation bonds, so they're backed by the full faith and credit taxing powers of the city. They're gonna be rated. They both do qualify for state credit enhancement or a guarantee by the state of Minnesota because they're primarily water sewer type projects. Probably have to scoop the road up to kind of get to this stuff, so it's considered a water sewer project under state law for this program. And we'll get a triple A, Standard and Poor's triple A bond rating. You have an A rating yourself, and the state just got upgraded by Standard and Poor's to a triple A again, so you'll have that kind of backing behind these two bonds, which is great. And I see we've signed some papers already on that. It was for the guarantee, basically, so that's a good thing. Commit yourself to a guarantee to make payments. If you don't make the bond payments, they'll ask for it back, okay? So you want to make sure you make your bond payments. It's just really nice that that's behind there because then, as security, additional security for the folks that are purchasing these bonds, we'll know that, you know, not only you're gonna pay for it, but the state will back you up too, and so they'll get their money. So they're guaranteed to get their money. So we've got two bond issues tonight. We prepare a pre-sale report before we sell a bond. So tonight, we go through the pre-sale report. You've seen it. There's a couple resolutions behind each one. One's to action that I'll be asking for is to have Ellers and Associates, our company, move forward with packaging this up, and coming back, I think, is on April 22 is your second meeting in April with bond bids, okay? And so you'll see the list of who's interested in it. We'll put them in order for you. We'll put the best one first, so it's easy to make a decision. And then there's a resolution that authorizes the mayor and the state administrator to go and approve the guarantee documents. And it gets administered through the Public Facilities Authority, the PFA, and so you're getting some grants from those folks too. And it's USDA, basically, loans that are gonna come off of this first bond issue. So we've got, you know, four resolutions after kind of the little summary of what we're doing here. So the first bond issue is an $8,395,000 temporary bond. It's a Series 2019A. And so this bond issue is similar to your 2016 and 2017 bond we did for Phase 1 and 2, I suppose. This is Phase 3. And that, those temporary bonds are getting ready for conversion already by the end of this year. And if USDA is not ready to convert those to the 40-year loan, we can do another temporary bond. So we'll see where we're at a few months before the end of the year on that one. So we're doing the same thing on this Phase 3 bond. So USDA does not... their long-term loan, they have to wait till an interim loan is entered into that pays for the project, and then the grant will pay for the rest, and then it gets converted over to their long-term loan. So there's also a lot of grants here. I think we've got a little over $21 million project, and this is 8.395 of the, one of the two loans. So congratulations on getting those grants. That's wonderful. Free money is always good. But of course, you're responsible for something, and this is a loan that's affordable for you, so we'll be working on that as well throughout the process. So this is a three-year temporary bond. It's an interim construction loan. Basically, it's, I call it's on autopilot for three years. It's gonna get paid. Interest is getting paid through the loan proceeds too, so until it gets converted after year three to a 40-year low-interest-rate loan through the USDA, Rural Development. So this will give us time to, well, to pay for the project, right, and then to get the revenues that are being pledged to this kind of ramped up, you know, so we can pay for that long-term bond eventually here. So that's what this bond is about. We've got a one-year call feature on this, so we won't be triggering that because it's gonna take a while to get this project through, but within a year, we'll be able to call this in and convert it with no penalty and things like that, so we can put a short call date or prepayment date on this bond issue for maximum flexibility. We're also going to deposit. The plan is, and I think the plan was before too, in '16 and '17, is to invest these proceeds with Ellers Investment Partners, our investment arm. They will also be looking at the local bank too, but they're investment advisors like us. They're not broker-dealers, but they can reach out and, you know, take the bond proceeds and put them in the highest-yielding investments they can and work with the engineer and USDA to ladder those investments so we can get some good investment returns off of this too. Sometimes it almost offsets the interest rate on this bond issue. You know, we're thinking this might be 2% or something. So investment rates are going up, and if we ladder the CDs and things like that, there's a way to maybe even wash that a little bit. So we're gonna try real hard to get that as high as we can, the investment return, and we're also gonna try real hard to get the bond as low as we can, right? The loan is low and the investment is high as we can. So that's what we do at Ellers for you folks. Again, it's gonna be rated. We're gonna go through financial management processes too to make sure this gets paid off correctly on time, and the long-term bond's got sufficient revenues, assessments, tax levies, things like that to pay back that loan. We're gonna use your bond attorney, Kennedy Engraven, like we always do. Bond Trust Services is gonna invoice Chris and the folks here on staff so you don't miss a bond payment. And again, the rating agency is Standard and Poor's. And there's a schedule on the back here that I'm shooting for April 22 again to come back with the bids on this bond issue. It's close somewhere midway, or mid-May. That seems to be... worked well with Jeff at USDA, who is the loan officer over there. We did talk to those folks with Chris and Shane to get that coordinated because I guess they can't start this work until these bonds close, actually, too, so we gotta kind of keep moving forward with this bond issue. So there's a preliminary bond cash flow or bond run, so to speak. It shows all the different sort of components. There's the sources and uses, and you can see what's being paid by a grant and what's gonna be paid by a loan. And so that's the first bond issue. And I don't know if you want to take action on that one right now first, and then the second one is... can come up right after that. So we've got a resolution that authorizes Ellers to proceed with selling the bonds and also authorizes the city to enter into the credit enhancement agreement with Public Facilities Authority for the guarantee behind it as additional security.
So we need a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-20, the sale of $8,395,000 worth of temporary bond.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd make a motion for Resolution 2019-21, authorizing the city to enter into the credit enhancement program.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. Second pre-sale report, same project, Phase 3. This is for ineligible cost. USDA only authorizes funding for certain parts of the project, and I suspect this is for maybe extra street widening or something like that. Sometimes they've got their little parameters of how much they're gonna fund as far as how large the project is, how wide the streets are, things like that. I've run into that in other cities as well, and/or something that just doesn't fit into their funding package. So this is for $5,335. It's a general obligation bond, and this one's gonna be a long-term 20-year bond. We've got 15 years of assessments on this, so we've wrapped a 20-year bond around that. And I know that's not gonna be levied for a while, so what we did on this one too is we've got two and a half years or so of capitalized interest and bond-funded interest in this as well because some of these revenues aren't gonna come on until later on in a few years. So this gives us a chance to ramp up those revenues too, and the special assessments typically come on until after the project or a little bit before the project is complete. So this bond issue is just going out. It's almost two-in-one. It's got the little kind of, almost a temporary bond in front of it, kind of on autopilot payments, and then it's 20 years from then on. It could have been a temporary bond as well, but you'd have to issue two bonds then, and this way, with rates so low right now, we're at darn near historic low interest rates again for bonds, and it's kind of a supply and demand thing out there, right? With the stock market doing its thing, folks are heading over to the bonds because they're just more of a sure thing than the stocks, so people get nervous and move over to the bonds. And then it's supply and demand, so if there's not a lot of supply, demand's high, then, you know, you're gonna get a lot of bids, and they're gonna get hungry for this kind of bond. So it's a good time to maybe just get this one taken care of in one shot here while rates are low because we don't know what's gonna happen in three years. Unlike the USDA loan where that's actually sort of locked in already. If anything on that USDA loan, it can go down. They don't think it can go up. So that's kind of nice. You got the best of both worlds on these bond issues. So this one too, we're shooting for credit enhancement or guarantee on this as well. Still water and sewer project in our minds, and so we'll treat it the same. General obligation bond. We're gonna sell it. We're gonna sell it at the same time, issue everything under the same package. On April 22, we'll come back on this one. Again, if there's any reason for us to separate these two, as far as with, there's federal rules where we can separate the two. I don't want to get too technical here, but I do want us to take full advantage of investment earnings on this as well, okay? Because this one's gonna be drawn down a lot slower, I think, than that first one. So if we can take advantage of as many federal sort of rules as we can, I would like flexibility too, and I think it's, we have to sell them. If I split them apart, I'd have to sell them 15 days apart. So I might, we'll, you know, keep touching base with Chris and Shane to see what's the most advantageous way to do this, but this one might actually sell maybe on your first meeting in May. I just want flexibility for that. It's either April 22 with the whole package, or this one sort of kind of moves over a little bit into May. And USDA, I think Jeff's okay with that. I said it was either predicated on closing or sell date, so I think it's sold date, talking to bond attorney. But this one is, again, it's gonna be the long-term version out into the market, and the good rates are still really, again, this one, pretty nice. I mean, I've got some average interest rate on this with a little bit of fluff cushion on it. You know, we're just a little over 3% on something like this, so cross our fingers, and we'll see how this comes to fruition in April or end or May. There's two resolutions on this as well, so if you have any questions, fire away. If not, we'll just kind of proceed with these two resolutions if I take consideration of those.
Okay, we'll need resolutions to approve. Resolution 1922.
Move approval of Resolution 1922 for the sale of 5.355,000 Geo Bonds.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution for 2019-23.
Make a motion to approve 2019-23 for the credit enhancement program with the Minnesota Public Facilities.
Second.
A first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much for the business again, and keep everybody posted on how things are looking in the market and, you know, staff, and keep everybody aware of what we're thinking here and implement the best strategy we can for you guys, okay? Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mind if I just say, he did a lot of work and a lot of work quickly because of the RD stuff, so I just wanted to say thank you for that because I know, I was on the phone making phone calls and getting quick answers. It was very, very nice of you to put us at the front burner for that, so.
You guys are easy to work with, so it's a team effort. It's not, you push back on one side or another, it takes too, it doesn't get done, so I appreciate your flexibility and tools.
Thank you. We'll move on to department head reports. Whoever would like to go first.
Don't all jump at once.
Yeah, nobody's jumping. All right, Tam, if you would please.
You're up here, you're last.
Yeah.
See, the city administrator, mayor, and council members. Last month, the State Capitol event at the end of February was very educational and a good learning experience, and hopefully for all of us there, we made a difference in the way the legislators think and vote when it comes to our business. On March 15th, we had a very successful tasting event again. And I think the tasting events, first of all, people enjoy them and they have fun at them, which makes them excited to come every time, and it educates the customers, which helps our sales. Thanks to Pam, Sis, and Rosemary for helping out with the event other than the employees. I don't know if for people, whatever, I should say I'm the liquor store manager? Am I supposed to say that? On the 21st of March, Chris, Jeff, and I went to the Worthington Liquor Store to tour their new store. Dan, the store manager, was very helpful in giving us a tour and suggesting things to consider as well as things to look out for. He, along with several other MMBA members, have expressed several times their willingness to help us with our move in any way that they can.
Where was that you visited?
I'm sorry, what?
Where was that you visited?
In Worthington.
Okay, thank you.
We've been asked to participate in the Women's Expo to have a booth there, so we are going to do so. February sales from 2018 to 2019, from Jan, or from February of both, we have an increase of 5,385 from one year to the other. April 27th through the 30th is the annual MMBA conference. I plan on going up really early on Sunday morning and returning really late on Monday night, so that way we can save the city and not have to pay for two extra rooms, you know, two nights of staying. I feel that the seminars that are most helpful for our business will be on those two days, so plus networking with other stores and vendors is very beneficial to us. Want to say kudos to us and our staff. We had a customer that sent a very nice thank you for our friendliness and for helping them and how much she enjoys coming in the store and looking forward to our move in the summer. So as always, anyone have any questions or any comments or suggestions? Please feel free to get ahold of me. Any questions? Are you good?
Thank you. Valerie, you want to go next?
Good evening. Reported to you last month about our annual report, gave you some stats on that, and that has been approved by the board and submitted now. Some information here about a new unattended child policy that the board approved. To summarize, it basically says that children under the age of eight should really be with an adult or an older sibling or babysitter or somebody when they're in the library. And that children of any age really left in the library by themselves should have a phone number with them in case of an emergency. And that's really just for their protection. And, you know, in case a child's safety or well-being becomes a concern and we don't have anyone to contact, the policy gives our staff permission to consult law enforcement on it. And as I say here, you know, we want children in the library. We do our best to look out for them, but people need to understand too that it's a busy place. We can't monitor every person, much less every child comes in and out every day, especially in the summer when it gets really busy. So that policy, along with our others, is on our website. So if anybody wants to read the whole thing, it is there. We got some good news that our request for proposals for the basement should hopefully go in this week, I think, and I just wanted to say thank you to Chris and especially to Shane for all their hard work on that. We could not have done it without them, so thank you to them. And then we have a bunch of events coming up in April. We have Little Minnesota and World War II on Saturday, the 6th of April at 3:00, and then that following Monday, the 8th, at 10 o'clock. And then that following Monday, the 8th, at 10 o'clock, we have a program on Barnes of Minnesota. And that actually is going to be at Prairie View, so we're excited to work with them. And then we have some other ones later in the month. A sock animal workshop for kids and hand stamped cuff bracelets. So circulation was up again in February and it's looking good in March. So we're happy with that trend. Anybody have any questions for me?
So you're heart of, heart of the farm Barnes of Minnesota, is that just a, is that a, like a pictorial or?
Yes. He is, he is a photographer and he, he has published several books on, you know, he has one on libraries, one on schools and one on Barnes. And so he'll, yeah, he'll have a lot of pictures to share and talk about that. So should be fun.
There's no cost associated with any of those, correct?
No. Nope. Those are all free and paid for with grant money, so.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions?
All right, thank you.
I don't have a lot for you guys tonight. Currently sitting at 33 fire calls for the year, which is slightly high for where we're at in the season already. Some of that due to snow coming off roofs, snow collapsing things, you know, all the snow. We are currently, right now, we have been hosting a firefighter one, firefighter two training. That's the course that we require all our firemen to do. We are hosting it here in Tracy. Firefighters from Walnut Grove, Wyndham, Minnioda, I'm not even sure how far to the southwest, have been coming to Tracy Saturdays and Sundays for this class and some Tuesdays. That'll be wrapping up here shortly. Kind of nice for our new members that they're able to do their classes that are, they can't do online, they're able to do them right in Tracy instead of them having to travel to Wyndham or somewhere. So that's kind of handy. We received a training grant this year for about $7,500. With that comes a lot of trainings, some training that have been happening here recently. We did our annual storm spotting training to get everybody up to speed because that season is going to approach us quickly. Hopefully the snow will be gone first. We did a men fire health and wellness, men fire initiative. For those of you that don't know what that is, it's health and well-being of first responders, deals a lot with physical health, cardiac, cancer, and then psychological, mental health issues of first responders. That was a real good, real good four-hour class. Sent one of my assistant chiefs and a captain up to a leadership program in Alexandria. A lot of this was covered again through that grant. New leadership issues in the fire service, assistant chief went to and the captain went to training courses and training topics and proper logging of training for OSHA and for NFPA. They were gone for a Friday, Saturday, Sunday for them courses. We are currently going to be hosting an advanced pump class. We sent about half the department to the merit center here a month ago for a basic pump class and we're going to bring that instructor down. He's actually going to do a short morning for some of the more experienced pump operators in the department to bring them all up to the basic level. And then mid-morning, all afternoon, he's going to do an advanced pump class. That's coming up here the end of April on a Saturday. So you see a bunch of trucks sitting around town at fire hydrants, you know what, what's going on. Our department is, is honored to have a large portion of the regions, the southwest region of the fire departments, the 55 towns in southwest Minnesota. Right now, the president, secretary treasurer, vice president and one trustee of that organization are all from Tracy Fire. Something they all do voluntarily on their own time, attend meetings. The State Fire Department Association Conference is actually coming up the end of the month in Mankato. Through the grant, I was able to, and actually through a promotion, I was actually able to send all four of them down there for very little money. I think it's probably going to cost right around $400 to send four of them and their spouses for a four-day training program, which at that point, a couple of them will be recognized for what they do in our region. So very cool, very good training for all of them. Rural contracts were sent out. Some of them have started to trickle in. I believe we'll put that on the second meeting in May for approval of the council. They should all be back in by then, so we can get them approved, signed off and the letter of intent mailed back out. Got a few different grants out there right now for a set of rescue jack, rescue jacks. Brief description on rescue jacks, start dealing with vehicles on their side or even collapsed buildings. We dealt with a couple of them this year. These are rapid deploy jacks. So you pull up to a car on its side, you literally push a pin, actually you pull a lever and they slide out to certain levels. There's a ratchet strap on them and a chain on the backside and pretty much makes a triangle. You get the vehicle here and comes down and the chain hooks to the bottom and you ratchet it tight to it and the vehicle's 100% secure. They also double as stabilization for collapsed buildings and items like that to help shore up. It's a two-piece kit. The actual jack, the jack juniors that I just described, otherwise then there's the regular jacks. They actually have cranks on them and you can put them two jacks, so you have a car on top of a car. You can actually sling a chain between them two jacks on the side and two firemen can sit there and crank on the jacks and lift the car safely off and stable. Very, very slick, slick technology. Been out for four, five years now. First came out, they were super, super expensive. One of our vendors has a demo set out there right now that we're actually, we actually have at our fire hall. We've been trying out to see how we like it. Sounds like they're going to be thinking about replacing it. So hopefully one of these grants will come through about the same time that they decide they want to, or before someone else buys it and we can get a slightly used set for about half. So complete sets probably about 16,000 and this set, we're probably right around 7,000 to own, so. Couple different grants out there right now. Working with the railroad a little bit, working on trying to get a drone. Lots and lots of different uses for a drone in the fire service. You know, when drones first came out, everybody said, oh, it won't be long and fire departments will have them. And I went, who's going to take the time to fly that thing? Sat through a couple of different classes, seeing the benefits of it, looking back at the flood we had and even some of the minor flooding, the water running that we have around here now, some other benefits in the community that would be mildly nice to have. Something else we could have used for it is when we were having some structural issues with lots of snow, we could have patterned out and especially in the downtown area where we have a lot of flat roofs, we could have actually inspected them to see if there was any damage to any of them, any buildings in advance or any large ice heaves that were dangling over something important could have all been done. Literally sitting almost in an office instead of driving up and down all the alleys and trying to look up on roofs. So I think there's a lot of benefits to, to having it. But again, they are, to get all the floor and thermal imaging and everything, you're probably somewhere in that 30,000 range. So we'll keep writing grants until we come up with some money for that. Other than that, yeah, fairly busy fire calls, lots and lots of training going on. I, about half the departments over in Walnut Grove at the community center, Walnut Grove Fire was hosting a fire dynamics class tonight. They had some room available, so we filled up the open chairs that they had. They actually are funding that class through their grant. Something that the, a lot of the smaller towns around here are trying to do is the grants big enough for this many people, or the class is big enough for this many people and we're using training dollars to do it. So if we have five, five or six slots open, we'll invite anybody that wants to come to fill the spots and help utilize everybody's free money. Questions, comments, concerns? Jerry's looking at me funny.
I like you talking about grants.
Where are we at on the trucks?
The chassis for the pumper truck is supposed to hit the factory this week. It was, so we're now a month and a half behind from what the original delivery date was on it. But International said that it should make it to Rosenbauer this week, so it will be in production. Hopefully we'll have it here shortly.
Did they give you any kind of timeline there? Approximate?
Well, originally we were supposed to have the truck here by next weekend, so I'm going to guess that it's probably going to be May 1st.
Thank you, Dale.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay. I'll go next. What I'd like to talk about tonight is, is the state of the housing that we have here in the city of Tracy. I've been working with this directly and indirectly for the last year and a half and just, just to go through a couple of scenarios that we have going on right now. Orchard lanes. I have a, the list of people that want to get into orchard lanes right now is at 10 again. So essentially, right now, there's eight units out at Orchard lanes. There's four two bedrooms and four three bedrooms. Essentially, right now, if there was eight more built, we would have them filled. And what that would do is probably all eight of those would free up houses here in town. So not only would we not lose the population to surrounding areas or larger populated areas, we'd have those eight people staying here in town and add a, something near the Orchard lanes area that we have. Plus, we'd have the houses for sale here in town. Right now, to go along with that, we have only nine houses for sale here in town. So put that into perspective on, and that's what I'm, right now, I'm working on a couple of individuals that possibly would like to put up a, an Orchard Lane or that type of thing. The EDA doesn't want to get into a, we're not in the real estate business, but we also have to move forward in having places for people to move to. So I am working right now with, with a couple of individuals and working with them on the possibility of getting them some land where they can put up some of those, those units. The Orchard Lane units out there are, the two bedrooms are $800 apiece and the three bedrooms are $900 apiece. And right now, again, there is a, a waiting list of 10 and I don't see anybody leaving out there right now.
Is it because everything's on one level? You know, zero entrance?
Doing good. You're leading me right in. No, that's, it is. You're absolutely right.
The other ones, you know, like the ones down on Fifth Street.
Yep.
You know, there's a couple openings in those four complexes, but there's steps.
But there are the newer ones and the nicer ones that are out here and they're, they're larger. The, the two bedrooms are 1,150 square feet. The, the three bedrooms, you know, good up into that 1,350, 1,400 square feet. So they're, they're larger, they're nice, they're in a very nice area, which like all of them, even on Fifth Street and the east view ones are all in nice areas. But the, the rent out here is, is a little bit higher and if people are willing to pay that. So, but you're right, one level is what people want to get onto. And just think, if we had that filled, we'd have essentially 10 houses or eight houses here in town that would be for sale, for more people to move into town, to hold on to our population.
So you're looking to build duplexes, four complexes?
Well, that's, that's what I want to talk about next is, I'd like to talk about our, you know, we've been working diligently on getting some contractors that will return phone calls and come into the, the city to talk about some new housing in the area. And we've set up some, with the EDA, we've set up some, some area, the Broad Acres out there is, is the main one I'd like to talk about where that is ready to be built on or at least some of it's ready to be built on. And we actually have a, where I'd like everybody in the room here and the council members and mayor, I'd like you all to talk about it over the next couple or week and a half, is on April the 4th, Thursday, April the 4th, from 3:00 to 7:00 o'clock, there's going to be a couple developers here and we'd like a couple contractors to be here, but we're going to have an open house for people that are looking at getting into a different kind of house of what they're moving, that they're living in right now. Or people that maybe never thought they could afford to get into a new house, but we, we think we've got some answers for some people like that too. But we, we want, but we're going to have that open house from 3:00 to 7:00 on April the 4th. And there's going to be a couple developers here and we're going to have it set up and we're going to have some, some cookies and juice to go along with it. But they're just, I'd like to encourage the, the public, whether you are looking for a house or not looking for a house, to come out and talk to myself, some of the EDA board members. Chris will be here and a couple developers and see what we can do about the housing here in, in Tracy. But we're going to have examples of twin homes, like you just talked about, town homes. We're going to have some signup lists and we're going to show some blueprints and we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, what it costs to get into these and how the city and the EDA can help get some people into newer homes. We'd like to facilitate that.
That's going to be here?
That's going to be right here in the chamber, city chambers. 3:00 to 7:00 on April the 4th, Thursday, April the 4th. So I encourage anybody who would like to change the type of house they're living in or would like to get into a house that they could buy, to come and talk to a couple of developers.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Hey, I'm going to, can I add something, please? There is going to be, there actually is something in the shopper to the, that went out next, will go out next Monday and then this Wednesday in the Tracy Headlight Herald, there will be a, an ad, a colored ad, kind of explaining what we're doing. So look for that there and then there'll be a reminder the, the Wednesday after, right before we have the open house on the, or the 4th.
I may have to leave, but I can go over, any questions you may have on the report?
How are you going to straighten the expensive part?
I was just going to say.
I guess in addition, we did get the street sweeper out today. Been yielding well on gravel and dirt and leaves from last year, but.
It's a good harvest.
I don't know, Mr. Mayor, is it all right if I jump to?
Sure.
Let's see, 10 each?
Yeah.
I included a memo. Let's see, the salt truck. So right now, we're running a 1997 one-ton, two-wheel-drive salt truck and it's been a salt truck all its life. Miles aren't real high, but the rust is. Like we're on here probably third or fourth stop sign in the floor because it's rusted through about that many times. So looking to replace that with a little heavier truck than we're currently using. Really nothing fancy, but it's going to be a, looking for a ton and a quarter. Leaf springs are bent backwards on these because it's been overloaded too much. So the same length, but just a little more stout. Going to stainless hoist and bed with hopes that it'll last a little bit longer than the one we currently have. This wasn't the budget for this year. It's about three months out through the National Joint Powers Association through Sourcewell. It's about three months out through the National Joint Powers Association through Sourcewell. I kinda broke it down. I don't know if you guys have any questions on this part?
I would say one thing to mention on it is it was originally pitched to you guys with the plow on it, and since we are gonna need a plow for a while, he wants to evaluate the need for a plow, being we have some other equipment stuff to discuss moving forward, so he did hold off on the plow for now. So that's why the numbers might be lower than before, so the plow will be in the fall if we don't do something different instead of the plow. So just, so you're not asking, he comes back in six months and says, "Well, I'd like to get the plow now," and you say, "What plow?"
You said this was budgeted for you?
It's in the 2019 budget.
And how much is budgeted? Do you recall?
Into the 2019 budget?
I don't know it here.
Isn't it 68.5 or 69 or?
Somewhere in there. Might even be 70.
Put me on the spot.
Sorry, man.
Which number, Shane?
That's, that's close enough. I wanted a ballpark. You don't have to.
Kill him.
Yeah, no, no.
Well, I'll answer.
That was not the intent.
It was, it was put into the budget with this quote.
Okay, yeah, great. Okay, that's, that's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Do you just need a motion?
So I spent enough, you go ahead and make a motion.
You're in the 13 million in there. You're covered for a bit.
Catch up.
You're good for a while, Tony.
I'll make a motion that we move ahead to replace the salt truck with the quote that you stated, 'cause I don't remember the price.
It's roughly 69,000 after, 'cause we're, we do have to pay some tax through motor vehicle, even though we are tax exempt, but Fire Department, police don't, but Public Works does, I guess, so.
Really?
I don't know why they single us out, but, so obviously, the 48.5 and the 18 don't exactly add up to the 69, but that's 'cause of the tax and estimated about what's in there, so, so I wanted to make sure I was.
Do you need the motion to be exact, or just that we approve?
I would say to approve the purchase of the truck and to approve the bed quote as they are in here from Christ Steel with tax and title, license, all that stuff.
I'll make that motion.
So I'm gonna.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Do you have the tractor one, too? Is that you?
Do I?
I think that's off my, top of my head here, but, so the 9034 tractor, the motor did blow up on us a couple weeks ago. Looking into the cost of the value of the tractor, which is roughly 20, if we're lucky, and we got a fair amount of salvage value. I did get some quotes, but being it's an RFP, it wouldn't be fair for me to say what those are. But based on what those were and what the cost of the engine to rebuild it, even on our own, not counting our labor, we'd be, we'd be building it for somebody else if we replaced it in the next three years, so.
It exceeds the value of the tractor.
Yeah.
So it'd be back, the city going backwards.
So we're looking into getting a, the FAA wants us to change the way we mow at the airport for wildlife mitigation. They want taller grass. Our current mower is not able to mow taller grass. It's four inches about its max height. So we'd have to go to like a pole behind type mower to establish that. We still need to keep the, the grass in the actual runway lower, but the outside of it needs to be six to 12 inches. So that's gonna take a tractor to do that. So right now, we're looking into grants through the FAA and MINDOT Aeronautics to try to fund part of it, and then have the tractor kinda owned and mow in the summer and move snow in the winter. 'Cause right now, that tractor, it gets used a little bit in the summer for tree removal and some straightening of alleys. But the rest of it is, it just sits in the summer. Where if we get a tractor mowing, we'd get rid of the 580 Toro, and then have the tractor pretty much be used year-round then. It's not collecting dust anywhere at any time, so. That's kind of our plan, but we just kinda want to talk to the FAA and make sure we get all our ducks in the row. We're actually going there on Thursday. Kind of determine what we need to do moving forward, so, and then we'll get you some future pricing, and Chris and I will kinda discuss on, you know, what's left in the equipment. Air budget from previous years that was unused. I know last year, we had a budget for a salt truck, but ended up buying a mower, so it wasn't enough for a salt truck, so we just carried that money over. So there is some money that's just left from, in the fund for, for equipment replacement, so I just may have to move some stuff around in the future to make everything jive, but, but I'll bring those numbers up to you when we get something solid for that. So just kinda, the thoughts are right now, anyway, so.
Would that cut down on mow time out there?
It would, yes. And then we'd use our park's mower to go around the cones and, 'cause the one they quoted us is about 22-foot wide, so it wouldn't take long. You know, might as well get one that matches the horsepower of the tractor, 'cause we need a 100-horse tractor to run our blower, the smaller alley blower, so 100-horse tractor will mow a lot of grass. No sense in wasting the horsepower and fuel as well. Put it to work, so.
You have that next time, or?
It's gonna be maybe a couple, three council meetings away yet, I'm sure, by the time I get everything figured out and set. We'd end up mowing for the year. I kinda brought it up to MINDOT today and kinda felt them out on grants. But we have to pay back. The, the 580 has some value yet, but it's got 6,000 hours on it, so that's really tired, too. We're gonna run it through the summer. For sure, this mowing season, and then we'd need to find a tractor before winter. Just kinda before we have to start moving snow again, so we can get by with the skid loader and the payloader until then, but. That being said, the mower, the 580 mower was paid for with grant money. Whatever the percentage is that the grant paid out back in 19, or 2004, I think, is when they, when the city bought that, we'd have to pay the, that percentage of the trade-in value back to the state, and they turn around and give us a new grant for it. But based on, because the tractor would be used in multiple uses, the city would have to purchase it and then rent it out, and then MINDOT would pay us for that rent. That's currently how we do, like the snowplows, the grader, the tareks at the airport. And I can, I'll put something together, see if it's real clear on how that works, but based on the price of the attachments that would only really be used for the airport, for that, with the exception of the bucket, it's almost a wash for what they're giving us on trade, so. But moving numbers around, we'll see how it, how it lands and what we have in the cash balance and the equipment replacement. We'll put something together for you for future meetings. But as of right now, I just wanna make the 9034 go away, I guess, and just approval for an RFP, get some, see who the highest quote is between the salvage yards and.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
So I'd make a motion to allow Shane to look into the, basically, the scrapping of the 9034 tractor, essentially, for us?
I think what he'd like is to actually get a motion to allow an RFP
Okay.
to sell the 9034 tractor. If that'd be okay.
I'll make that motion. Okay.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'd see here.
About my report?
Not yet. I'm sorry, I got a question for Shane.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thanks. Working on the Phase 3A sewer televising services. Where are we at with that? I know that not everybody was, was able to get televised yet. Are they planning on?
Most of them are done. I think there's a few that they couldn't get through, couldn't get out through the pipe 'cause of, of a blockage of some sort. Right now, what I'm doing is going through all the televising to note any footing drains or root intrusion and anything like that, and then get letters out to the property owners so they're aware of it prior to the project. Then they can, you know, while everything's dug up, it's a lot more feasible to do it.
So they're going from the street in now, is that?
Either the street in or the house out. They tried everything from the main, and they had a lateral launch going into the, the services. That was done last fall, and then the ones they couldn't get into because of the condition of the vein or whatever, then they had to do push cameras from the houses. And those are the ones that they didn't quite have the ends tied up on, but they're gonna, they're getting close to the end on that, so.
Well, and it's kind of of special interest to me, because they have not done mine.
Okay.
And I haven't heard anything from them, so this is kinda why I'm asking. I can't be the only one in town that is in that position.
I think there was a, maybe 10 or so left.
Okay.
And it was up to Empire Pipe to contact everybody, so I'm not sure what, what their status is.
I'm like, mine couldn't be done because they couldn't get to my, the outlet.
The clean out.
The clean out to get, 'cause it's behind my water softener.
Okay.
But I can ask them.
Well, I mean, I've contacted them like three times, and I, they have not, you know, they always said, they've always said, "Well, we'll get in touch." Haven't heard anything, so.
Yeah, I can talk to them and see how, what their status is, 'cause they've kinda been talking to the engineers on, on that, so.
Well, and I just wanted to make sure that there's others in town that, you know, that we need to contact. We need to make sure that we get to them. Okay, anybody else got any questions? Thank you, sir.
Anything else you need from me?
I don't think so.
Nope.
There's a lot going on, so I'm gonna.
Oh, yay.
Go assist.
In town or out? In.
Don't get wet.
So, Chris, if you'd like to do your report?
Just a bunch of meetings, as always. Sanford Consumer Committee, some EDA Chamber Director meeting we had, EDA morning developer, Public Works and EDA, had the Community Risk Reduction and Rental Housing meeting, or it was actually a class, is a very good class. Burnsville has a very good program set up. We're trying to work through some of their, some of what they've instituted for that. Department Head meeting, Planning Commission, Aquatic Center, we, after your approval of the Aquatic Center manager, we have started setting up for opening up the pool. It doesn't seem like it, but that's not far away from opening, so we're getting ahead of the curve on that, setting up dates and such, a couple account reviews, things like that. I met with the, I was, got invited to a TDC meeting and went and met with them, talking about TDC city relations stuff. That was pretty, a really good meeting, and had sent some staff to band you in utility billing training, talking about some stuff. Local Government Workshop, which you all attended last Wednesday, which I think went really well and was good stuff, and then we had the Worthington meeting. Upcoming, we have our auditors will be here next week, so that's getting stuff ready for them. Bond preparation, obviously, that's been a hot topic right now and very time-consuming, but Todd from Ellers made it very easy. FEMA, we're in the EEI reporting stage. We've got very few things left to do with them, and then it'll go to decision-making stuff. Public Works diversion efforts, met with Shane and Dale and a couple of, and just kinda went over some things and decided, hopefully, this isn't serious tonight that he went to, but the Public Works really did a good job putting a lot of stuff out there and, you know, getting ahead of certain things, blowing paths for water, staging the equipment, things like that, just in case it did flood, especially during that situation where it was gonna rain, so I'd like, I wish he was here to hear it. Big kudos to him and his staff out there for the efforts they did. It was, I don't think people will ever realize how, how much they may have stopped by what they did. Upcoming event, Shane and myself are, and Airport Commission member are going to the FAA. We've got a facilities requirement meeting with them coming up on Thursday, and talk about some possible grant opportunities. And one of the reasons Shane put off the, you know, wanting to just sell this tractor, 'cause it's not an immediate need, is because, you know, and again, I wish he was here to hear this, he, a lot of credit, he's trying to take maybe two pieces of equipment and only replace it with one, and it's, it's a cost savings measure that I'm, I definitely back him on. It's really good stuff. And then I have a Safety and Loss Workshop coming up with the League of Minnesota Cities for upcoming. If you have any questions. I have more meetings coming, more.
Is that it?
Yep. Sorry. Just sleep at my desk most of the time. Seth, don't put that in the paper.
Bet you're sleeping at your desk. People start knocking on the window.
We'll just tell everybody to do that now when they walk by.
Anybody got any questions for Chris? Okay, thanks, Chris. Petitions, we did the plaques. Port board, appoint board member to the HRA Board, Sis Fearman.
So even though we tried to create a domestic by pinning them against each other, there were actually two positions open on the HRA Board, which I think a lot of us questioned why both of them were applying for. It's because there were two positions open, so.
Yeah, one, one supernote is retired, or resigning, which we didn't know about, so.
I was wondering about that.
Joe will actually be for one year, and Sis will be for the five-year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yep.
First and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will set the date for the spring cleanup, May 18th, 2019.
The ideal date for the cleanup is May 18th, 'cause it's after Mother's Day but before Friday, so if, it's a council decision on what day to set it at, but if you have a better date, I.
I take it that's a Saturday, huh?
Correct.
And it'll be misty rainy that day? Just 'cause that's the only, that's the only time we do, way we do clean up.
And about 41 degrees.
Yep. Then do we, the fee structure, probably stay, stay the same?
Stay the same this year. The only thing that'll change is if there's, if the appliance thing goes up or anything like that, or.
It'll be published well in advance.
Correct, yep.
Jay, need a motion?
I'd make a motion to book cleanup day on May 18th. Is that 9:00 to 3:00?
I don't have it from me. I think it was, was it, it was 9:00 to 3:00 before, or was it?
If, if we need the time.
9:00 to 4:00.
9:00 to 4:00? Okay.
That's what it was last year. So I don't know if you wanna keep it that way, or?
I think it works.
Shane was interested in keeping, if he was here, I think he'd totally say he was interested in keeping everything the same as long as our fees coming in are the same as well, so. The only thing we're looking at doing is asking the county if we can get a household hazardous waste trailer here, because we can't transfer that, so in the past, we have not accepted that. And if we can get their trailer that day, then we can accept it, so, and that'll be in the announcement and in the paper and such, so.
Okay, so we have. Do we get a? Do we get a second on that?
A second.
First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liability coverage waiver.
So this, you may remember, came up last year as well. Every year when we renew our insurance with the League of Minnesota Cities, we have the option to waive, uh, statutory the tort limits, uh, in the, the history of the city, is that you do not waive it, and I get, it would be my recommendation that we do not waive it.
Most of we do not waive our liability coverage waiver.
Second.
First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Call for a closed meeting, employee requests for leave of absence and administrative review, so. At this time, we're going to close the meeting?
No.
For that?
No, just need to, um, just get a resolution, or I'm sorry, a, a motion to conduct a closed meeting at the end of this meeting.
I see.
Continue on with business.
Got you. Okay, so we'll need a motion for that?
I'll move.
Second.
First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll do the closed meeting after this meeting. Uh, temporary liquor license, women's expo.
This is, I believe, standard every year, yep.
And it's self-explanatory?
Yeah, they've, uh, they have to go through the council desk for the request, so.
I'd make a motion for a temporary license.
First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Planning Commission application, Matthew Nakamas.
We got another application in after last month's thing for, for Matt Nakamas. He, uh, put in for Planning Commission and Charter Commission. Ask that you kind of hold off on the Charter Commission so we can do them all at once, because there are some costs and timelines associated with it and getting it approved.
Is Matt a resident? If he's not a resident, he can't.
That he was a resident.
He's a resident.
He's a resident.
I don't know.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think he is. So do you wanna just hold off?
We can appoint him to.
Well, if you, um, if you want, you know, on the Planning Commission or not, that was the question.
Then I'd come off.
That would be, we do not currently have an opening on the Planning Commission, that's correct.
Well, I'd make a motion to put Matt on the Planning Commission. I'd remove myself.
Second it?
First and second, any discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, airport Phase 3 engineering?
Um, well, it's not actually airport, um, that's a typo, sorry. Um, approve Phase 3A, 3B engineering. So you got the maps that we're putting in front of you, that'll be Phase 3B, and I know we're just finishing up the bond and stuff on Phase 3A, but the engineering and stuff needs to start taking place for B, um, in the event that we could get going on that next year, if they get Phase, uh, Phase 3A done this year. So, uh, the engineers are requesting permission to start the, um, engineering portion of it.
That's all the purple?
What's that?
That's the purple?
No, it's actually the purple, the orange, and the brown. This would be, it would be doing Phase 3, what was previously called, uh, C, D, and E. I think it's not on this map. Uh, those are, and now they're gonna combine that all and make it Phase 3B, these three sections that you see on the map. And that fits within the parameters of size-wise of what a contractor could take on in one summer, which is kinda why it's strategically placed like that.
Memory serves, all this is gonna require opening the streets and trenching and.
Correct.
So now, are the, the width of the streets being affected in this phase?
It will, the, the width of the streets will then fall in, there'll be, the sidewalks will be like in kind, like you had decided earlier, and the width of the street will fall into the, um, size parameters. I, I don't have them in front of me, but they're residential, the standardization that was put out. So if the street is overly wide now, it'll be narrowed. If it's overly narrow, it'll be widened, it'll, it'll go to our standard size. And almost every resident that has come in so far that questioned their street width, their street was actually getting wider, so. I haven't had anybody, and if anybody is welcome to ask me, and I will, I will, we'll measure their street and let them know how, what the change will be.
I'm wondering, well, Sixth Street, because that's a wide street, and you know, there's a lot of traffic that goes that way, and it goes down to the Catholic Church and school. That's a very wide street.
Okay, um, if it's got a school there that has a different setting on it, or a different width.
But one was a lighter.
Yeah.
I remember, uh, we had emergency routes.
I don't know the width now, so I couldn't tell you, but I can tell you that the, the standard width was based on Shane, as his Public Works input in the Planning Commission, and then it was presented.
There was, um, emergency routes, and then schools and churches, and then residential, I believe, were the three.
And downtown. And your business district, yep.
So people that live in on these streets can find out what's gonna happen to their street, or can we easily put it out there for somebody?
Um, we can easily put it out, but I, just like the Phase 3A project, there will be an open house right before it takes place. Right now, this is just preliminary, preliminary engineering.
They got a survey, and they got, and where everything is and what's gonna be replaced.
So there'll be a similar open house that people can come down and look exactly how they're gonna do it.
Exactly, and then the engineers will be on hand to explain that. This isn't saying, hey, you're getting this in front of your house next week. This is, we need to do the engineering, and the, and the engineers need to have your permission to do it. I, I would say, I think that we're gonna probably have Phase 3A going to next year. I think that the likelihood of it being done in one year, I think we're on the bubble, but, you know, this project will not take, this won't take place in conjunction with Phase 3A. That's, the city just can't take that.
Right. This is just an initial looky-loo.
And this could be a multi-year project too.
Yeah.
They could come in and do the, you know, the orange and the brown one year and the purple the next.
I don't remember. Did they give us the cost estimate on that?
On?
On the engineering?
Oh, um.
My, uh.
I, you know what I?
My package just.
Okay, it'll come back in a bit.
Yeah.
It was in part of the original, um, stuff that we set up for the full Phase 3 project.
Yeah, they broke, that's what I was asking. They broke that down per each phase.
Correct, and this one will be broken down as, if, if you're looking specifically for it, it'll be broke down as Charlie, Delta, and Echo.
Yep. I'd make a motion and approve the Phase 3B engineering.
I'll second that.
First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Airport contraction safety phasing plan to the FAA, apron replacement?
Probably got some acronym, I just don't know it. Um, it's government, so it's gotta have one, but, um, essentially, we hired Bolig to do our engineering out at the airport, and they're doing the airport master plan. We're at a stage where the apron replacement, the grant has gone through, and we've been awarded that grant with the apron replacement. So in order to move that step forward, there's two steps that we need to go. Um, K and L both are in, uh, in reference to that. The safety phasing plan, that's something that we would like to deliver to the FAA. Uh, it actually will have some impact to do with our meeting on Thursday, so it's nice to get it approved tonight if you so need or so see that. This is just permission for Bolig to push what essentially the city paid them to do, to give that information to the FAA for the safety phasing plan.
And this is paid for by a grant? The apron replacement?
This was paid for as part of the master plan. Oh, I'm sorry, the, the, the actual apron replacement, correct, yes, that's paid for. There, there are some costs associated with it.
About eighty-five, fifteen, or ninety?
Ninety-five, five, so it'll come, it'll break down to where it's ninety percent FAA funding, five percent MINDOT, and five percent city matching, and that's, that's so far preliminarily what it is. We'll find out more on Thursday and bring it back. And then the next one down, that L, I don't know if you wanna put these both into the same motion, because they're very, they're together really, uh, is the construction task order. That's allowing them to develop the plan and get the construction needs for the apron together, and that's a requirement for the FAA funding.
The contraction should be part of their task orders. What they've got to do is that.
Correct.
Then I, I'd make a motion then to approve Bolig's engineering, tasks, task order number six, for apron replacement, and the contraction that goes on with it.
First and second, is there any discussion?
Does that include the phasing plan being, okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, K and L.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then, uh, the motion to approve items K and L are approved. Um, Broad Acres?
Just to bring that up, the, uh, the Broad Acres redevelopment area that we've been, uh, working on for the past, uh, nine months is, uh, I just need approval from the council to be able to sell that. And it might be a little bit of out of, out of order, um, maybe the cart before the, before the horse a little bit, but the fact is, we have that, that, uh, open house is going to be on the fourth, and that's gonna be before the next, um, city council meeting, and then it's, there's, I have to have also a, a public meeting at the EDA meeting, which would be on the seventeenth, so everything's gonna happen quite quickly, so this is the first piece of it. Uh, um, Matt, the city attorney, said that I should get, uh, permission from the council to sell the prop, the property at Broad Acres, even though it doesn't even, it isn't split up yet, so I would have the right, um, oh, what are they, the, the parcel numbers aren't correct yet, but I need permission to be able to sell that property if it comes up and make a purchase agreement for it.
That's from Matt?
Yep. So it's gonna, probably gonna be happening, I'm hoping it's gonna be happening quite a bit over the next few months, that I'm gonna be asking for permission to sell separate properties.
What we need then is to allow the, a motion to allow the EDA to sell the EDA purchased lots in the Broad Acres addition.
Yep.
I'd make that a motion. And then. There's no timeline, we don't even have a price set out, and forget so.
Well.
We've talked a lot about it, but the fact is, is we need to discuss that in a purchase agreement and, and, but this is the, the initial piece of it. We do need to get it, so I can have permission to do it.
The simple thing is, it's a city asset, so to alleviate any problems that could develop later, you as a council are giving the EDA permission to sell that lot as they see fit. That's, that's what you're looking.
That's, that's all I'm gonna make sure I have verbiage right, so.
And we don't need to stipulate lot numbers or anything like that.
And truthfully, you shouldn't, because of the fact that the EDA doesn't have the distinct buyer yet, and there could be changes that.
Okay.
And the EDA will hold a hearing, a public hearing.
It'll be, uh, put in the paper ten to twenty days ahead of time, and we'll have a, a public hearing. I believe right now it looks like we're gonna have the public hearing on the seventeenth of April.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Answer all your questions?
Yeah, 'cause I was just wondering about the, the selling price, but the EDA will set the price.
Yep, and we've talked about the selling price already. I just assume not talk about that right now, and.
That's a real estate transaction, and we're going to close session if we're gonna.
No, my, my question was, do they set it, because if we approve to sell it, to sell it, we are gonna have no say in the price that you asked for it.
It's correct, actually.
The consensus of the EDA board, Jerry, is to sell it at no less than every dollar we got in the ground.
Okay.
So, I think that's the simplest way without giving a price.
Yeah, I understand I'm giving the price, but I appreciate that explanation, because that's what I was kind of.
Yeah, we're not going backwards.
I'll second that motion then.
First and second, any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we've done the resolutions already. Facilities authority, that's, okay, that's just a continuation of that line. Um, municipal accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage, the municipal accounts receivable report, and approve the Planning Commission minutes from February fourth.
First and second, discussion? Um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, carries, motion carries. Breakthrough beverage?
Make a motion to pay breakthrough beverage.
First? Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, unfinished business, clearing sidewalk ordinance?
So currently I've gotten, I've heard back from two cities, um, just kinda developing that plan. That's gonna take a little bit of time. Leaving it on here is unfinished business, just so that it doesn't get put aside, but, uh, um, I would say that in the next one to two council meetings, I should have a drafted resolution to present to you so that you can determine or recommend changes to it at that point. It, it'll give us a good starting point.
Okay. Thank you. Um, ordinance changes regarding on-sale liquor license and kitchen definition?
Uh, probably kind of a similar issue. I haven't heard back fully from, uh, everyone. In fact, I, I haven't heard back from, the only ones that I've heard from, I had to actually physically call a second time and ask for information on, and there's not a lot out there for changes in kitchen. Um, even the examples I got, I went online to those cities, and I, I'm not finding the information. So I'm at their mercy right now, so I, I guess, I would ask that the council table it. It's not a pressing issue right now, and I need to be a little more well-versed on it before I can.
Well, I, I would question why we're considering doing this at this time. We have no specific interested party. And it doesn't, it's not, from what I can see, it's not to our advantage. In fact, it would open up doors for some negative repercussion. Um, I see it as kind of like, uh, a poker game where we have our local business people already in town that have anned, anned up and contributed to the pot, and then we wanna open the door for someone to buy into the game for five dollars. I don't think it's fair to our local business people. I think we need to, um, take that into consideration and protect their interests. Um, so I, I guess I don't see why we would consider this without more specific, like, somebody specifically requesting it, or, you know, I don't see how it benefits us to just do it.
Well, by tabling or not, we're trying to get the information to make a informed decision.
Well, I agree.
In the meantime, to be out in front of it, if you have your verbiage and your, and your ordinance change ready, if someone comes knocking on the door and says, I wanna do this, you can open the door and let them have it.
Well, but we don't necessarily wanna let them have it, and it's costing resources for Chris to research this. Well, but we don't necessarily wanna let them have it, and it's costing resources for Chris to research this. You know, he's spending his time and, and, you know, hours of time putting into it, and we're burning resources we don't really need to burn, 'cause we don't have a pressing question to answer.
I guess I look at it that, you know, if, if there is somebody out there, by the time they come to us with the request, it's going to be quite a delay. That I, I think as a council, you know, maybe we did, I can't remember if we made a motion on changing the definition of the kitchen in that, or not?
Like, we're just gonna look into it.
With research and the verbiage, and so we can make it.
You gave me a few parameters. One of them was the definition of a hot, hot meal. And the other was, you know, size.
Kitchen, yeah.
Yeah. And then I think you also put that they'd have to meet the same health standards of whatever. So, that, that's what I have been focused on trying to find, and.
And I agree with you, Tony. I don't think it's a pressing issue, but it's nice to have, would be nice to have all the info and see what others have, and we can act on it or not act on it, but the information's not gonna hurt us any. I, I wouldn't expect Chris to spend the next three days trying to figure it out, but as he has time here and there, just to keep working on some of the information, it's not gonna hurt us any.
Yeah, I just.
Just table it and work it when you can.
Okido? Well, then we'll table, do we need a motion to table it?
No, it's, this is just directed from council to me, so you don't need a motion.
Okay. We'll table that one. So, there's no new business? Mayor, Council Communications, anyone? Okay, so at this time, do you, do we, we wanna close?
Make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting, so we can open again to the closed session.
Second that.
First and second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time.